Hello, hello, there we go. Well, welcome to our workshop for March 26th. Overall agenda, just a open discussion with council about various housing issues. Cost of housing, new cost of housings on existing housings affordability. I'm sure all of us have seen our existing households be much better off than in the past.
And I have about a five-minute real quick presentation to just kind of get things started.
Okay, do we, are we doing the pledge?
Yes, should absolutely.
Stand for the pledge, or do you have to adopt any agenda or anything?
We have one.
Yeah. I'm literally just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick note on our bridges probably won't be hit by any big boat. Can you imagine if that kind of disaster happened?
Do we need to take roll or anything?
Everyone's present.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
All right, um, do you want to do your five-minute thing first?
Yeah, let's kind of start it off. You know, the mayor initially had, you know, said that he wanted to kind of take a deeper dive into affordable housing in general. And so I sent some just preliminary read stuff for you guys to take a look at and kind of maybe hopefully get some ideas flowing. But I wanted to kind of, and I think this will work, maybe. Actually, I'll do this, I'll move it up there. Be smarter than podium. I'll move it over here. Okay, so essentially, when it comes to housing, and this is stuff you all know, but in general, you have, you have the big three, which are land, labor, and lumber or materials. Those are the things that essentially will determine 90% of the cost of anything that's going to go in, at least from the actual development of it, not necessarily the sale price. And I'll get into that in a second. The second, you know, leading thing that will obviously affect as we're seeing right now is interest rates. When money was cheap, houses were flowing and, and we had all kinds of activity. Right now, I think I looked last week and we have less than 40 houses actually on sale in the city limits of Shakopee, which is pretty striking.
Non-new construction, correct?
Um, that does not include new construction. Ultimately, market forces are going to prevail. So regardless of what something costs to build, builders are going to sell it and sellers, you know, if I'm selling my home today, I'm going to try to get as much money as I can out of that house. And it's going to be based upon the market. And that's a really important point that I think we need to keep in consideration as we're, as we're talking about housing in general. The prevailing force of the price of a new house or of the price of an old house is ultimately the market. The actual price of what it costs to build it, for example, my house was probably 150,000, 200,000 maybe. I can sell it for considerably more than that. One of the things that a lot of times people get concerned about are city fees. And, and we've done analysis on city fees in the city of Shakopee for probably about four years now. And this is actually probably two, one or two years old. But when it comes to city fees for a $375,000 home, which is our, our midpoint house in the city of Shakopee, 17.5,000 of that is actually city fees. That's 4.7%. That's an average when you're looking at homes in the Twin Cities area. You can have anything from four to about 7.5, depending on the individual city itself. Now, what does the builder get for that 4.7%, which is obviously is ultimately passed on to the individual that purchased the home? You have sewer connections, you have stormwater management, park dedication, park dedication fees, building inspections, which includes plan review and anywhere from 15 to 20 different inspections during the course of building that single home. And then your infrastructure inspections, and that of course is the roadways, the sewers.
Water lines.
Water lines, electric. So what, what can cities actually do? Our toolbox is not that big when it comes to affordable housing. And there are two ways you, you essentially can look at it. First is to what we can do quote unquote to help developers build. And the second thing is, is what we can do to consumers, what we can do to help consumers. These are all things that are available. In Minnesota, some of them are not allowed for residential housing. But overall, this is the extent of the toolbox when you think about it. When we're looking at developers, you know, the city can supply land at no cost to developer. That's an option. If we have city land and we want it developed, we could, the council could determine that that's what they want to do. We could TIF or tax abatement. We can weigh fees. Now, the problem when you weigh fees is that somebody ultimately has to pay that. And it's going to be, it's going to fall on the, the general tax levy then, at that point. We can have reduced lot sizes because if land is cheaper for a particular house, which mean you, you need less, then obviously the price of the, the house itself will be smaller. We can adjust setbacks. We can do reduced parking minimums for a particular structure. We can have density bonuses and essentially, yes, sir.
What is our current parking minimums on a single-family home?
I'm looking at our.
Two.
Two.
Two vehicles? Two parking spots.
Um. Which, which is also something different. A lot of communities actually require garages and some communities require three-car garages. We do not.
And then the parking is above and beyond that, right? Yes.
So you're talking street parking?
No, driveway parking.
Two slots in the driveway.
Yeah.
We can give a developer a bonus if the, if it's a higher density product. We can increase our density through our zoning processes. Or we can offer exterior, exterior material adjustments. In other words, allow people to use a lesser grade for their exterior, which will obviously bring down the cost of the house. The cost to, again, build the house. The other thing we can do, and this kind of just shows you how small our toolbox is overall. To achieve housing affordability for the consumer, if you will, we can offer down payment assistance. We can establish a local housing trust fund, which essentially will allow individuals to purchase or fix up a house. We can do home rehab and preservation programs. That's anything from forgivable loans to regular loans or even grants. We can allow accessory dwelling units, which simply means either a tiny home on the property or a grandmother home, as it's called on occasion. Yes, sir.
Quick question, are most of those handled by the county, like CDA?
Yeah, and that's a good point. We're, in Minnesota, cities really don't have the burden for providing affordable housing. We can help with the conditions, but a lot of this stuff is actually handled by the CDA.
Let me, go ahead, Jay.
Question on the accessory dwelling units. Certain zoning, like my area, my zoning down Lower Town Shakopee, you can have three units, right? Is that correct?
You can have an accessory structure up to 200 square feet without a permit.
You can have three ADUs on my property, I believe. Is that not correct?
Lots in the RLC zone, which is the traditional neighborhood district, President's area, generally North of Tampa Avenue, towards the downtown. It is allowed up to two dwelling units on lots that are 70 feet wide. So a duplex or a twin home, a 235 foot lot would be a lot. Now, if there is 70 feet width, the standard lot width is 60 feet. There are several that are 70. If you had a lot and a half, you could have two dwelling units.
So we're talking about it as an accessory dwelling unit as a separate building, but you could have three apartments in the lower zoning district, couldn't you?
Uh, those are existing triplexes or fourplexes that are legal non-conforming uses. The current standard is two units, maximum of two units on lots that are at least 70 feet wide.
And, yes, sir.
Do we want to have these guys at the microphones up here? Or do you just want to yell out, what's more comfortable for you guys? I was going to point out the accessory structure and the difference between an accessory structure, 200 square foot without a permit compared to a dwelling, which is going to require the electrical sewer, the.
Correct.
Electric sewer and.
Water.
And getting them to some of them, if you wanted to do that, is going to be pretty difficult. And I'll just use my own property or even yours. You're going to have to go from the street around your house to the back.
Run the sewer through the house somehow, yeah.
And, you know, that's almost cost prohibitive if you're thinking affordability.
Yeah, and, and the point being is these are, some of these things we do currently, some of these things we've never considered. This is just the extent of the toolbox as a whole. So there isn't a lot out there.
So we did have accessory dwelling units allowed in our subdivision. Were you able to have an in-law flat next to the?
Yeah, again, and you know, that's something the builder would want to build.
That was out on 16 East of 83, North of 16, correct?
And then the final thing, if you want to look at it from a consumer perspective, is providing some first-time homebuyer assistance. So that, you know, anything that, that, that cities are going to look at are going to be in one of those buckets. That essentially are all the buckets that we have available to us as a city. So I just kind of wanted to set that stage and recognize that, you know, in reality, you know, we, we've talked a lot about what the state is currently thinking about doing when it comes to affordable housing or what they call affordable housing bills, which really don't really address affordable housing. What they do is they take away the local control. Although they do some pieces of this, they actually have incorporated, including the parking and the accessory dwelling units. And there are some communities that don't, you know, that have minimum parking higher than two and they have prohibited accessory dwelling units altogether. The key is that each individual city is different. And I think the, you know, the best example is us and Prior Lake, as we were talking about a little earlier.
Right.
You know, when you look at Prior Lake, we are two different communities and we're right next door to each other. But for example, in Prior Lake, they have something like over 50 lift stations. We have three now.
We have three.
Uh, you know, and, and they obviously have bigger homes, especially along the lake area. You know, we have some lake land, but not a lot. And, and, and so when, when the state says that these are what you're going to do, that you're going to do these particular things, it takes away the ability of individual communities to determine what's best for their community. And as I was teasing with the mayor of Prior Lake a couple of weeks ago, is, well, that's great. Bill Reynolds is going to come in and buy a $1 million home that's currently on the lake. I'm going to tear it down. I'm going to put in a multi-story, high-end apartment building right on the lake. You know, and I'm going to do a million dollars a floor and everybody's going to be happy. Well, not everybody's going to be happy because those individuals that are right next to me, who have invested money in those particular properties, that's going to have an impact on their property value, so.
Well, and the bigger issue there would be if the sewer line serving them 10 houses along the lake on that side is four inches and now you're putting in this.
That's exactly right.
This big apartment and the water line isn't big enough, the sewer line isn't big enough.
Yeah.
Now what do you do and who's going to pay?
And who's going to pay for that?
How far back do you have to go? Do you actually have to go, you know, five, six blocks back to find a main big enough to supply that service? Now you're tearing up the whole neighborhood to make that happen.
And those are things that are currently not being considered, although I will say that we're making a lot of headway in the last couple of weeks and reaching out to communities and our, to legislators and making sure they understand the impact of what it is that they're proposing.
So let me, let me get out here in front.
So I'm, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reynolds and staff for your input, and your input is welcome. I'm not turning because I wrenched myself pretty good, so. I wanted to have this conversation, just relaxed, open conversation with council. And I asked for a while back and, you know, scheduling caucus and some other things happening. I was trying to get ahead of some of this legislation so we could have this discussion ahead of what was coming from the state. And here we are, we've already seen what the state is proposing. We've already taken a position on that as a council. Thank you, council, for that. But I really wanted to dig down into some of the basics. Now, is there anybody here that disagrees that the current inflation is not only hurting existing households in the cost of food, energy, whatever, but it's also putting an increase on a two-by-four, the shingle, the tar paper, whatever you need to build a new house, right? So I'm, I think, okay, so inflation is playing a part in that. Can we do anything about that? No.
Interest rates.
Interest rates because of inflation. Now, the federal government said they wanted to raise interest rates to cool the economy. And that was when they turned around right after that statement and said, here's a couple of massive infrastructure spending packages, like spending didn't get us into this problem to begin with. And it's not just this administration, this spending problem goes back both parties. So this is certainly not a partisan.
If you have a low interest rate in your house, you're not going to move out of your house to a smaller house.
Right, exactly.
To pay more for the house.
Exactly, exactly.
Pay more for interest, so.
Exactly right.
So you stagnated that whole market and nobody's moving.
Yep, you're exactly, that's exactly my thought too. And, and not only that, but if, if you're an existing household and you wanted to, I don't know, buy a car or whatever, buy a something that you're going to finance, the, the cost of doing that is much higher now because of that interest rate, right? We certainly can't do anything about interest rates. And the state, they, they want to have affordable housing, yet I think they raised every single tax available and came up with a few new ones, one which will hit in July, delivery tax. So they're, they're not helping the situation in some of these areas. What they proposed is, as we all know, we have a position on that. A lot of that stuff isn't actually helping affordability either because as we discussed about infrastructure and some of these other things, it's actually probably going to make the problem worse, so.
To pay.
So I just kind of wanted to go around the room and just hear everybody's thoughts. You know, when I, when I was thinking about this over the last two months, you know, I think, okay, here's Shakopee, who, in, in just my opinion only, has done a fairly decent job in having diversity in housing, whether it's, I mean, we've got four trailer parks in Shakopee, show me another city around us that has that. And I shouldn't say in Shakopee because some of them are right on the border and at some point will be annexed. Some are within Shakopee. We have apartment buildings, we have subsidized housing, we have Section 8 housing, we have all these things. We have the old naturally occurring affordable housing and natural occurring apartments. So, you know, we've got apartment buildings from the 50s and 60s that are, are, are naturally occurring affordable, just like our old Shakopee, my house. So we have this diversity that we've acquired over many decades. And when you compare our, what we have compared to others, you really should pat ourselves and staffs and past staffs on, past councils on the back for that diversity and for really looking out to the life cycle housing.
Exactly.
Unfortunately, we're in a position now where this one-size-fits-all state position actually punishes those that have tried to do the right thing. There's a lot of scary things if you really break down some of these proposals. If typically, when we look at, well, I'll just back up in, to the 50s. I'm not that old, I was not in council back then, so nobody give me any shit about that. But the Met Council was formed under the Minnesota Land Planning Act to specifically require communities to do their land planning process so that what Shakopee wants to do and what Savage wants to do don't conflict with each other. You know, there's somebody looking at our plan, looking at Savage's plan, looking at all our neighbors' plans and trying to make sure you don't put a industrial park next to high-end homes or something like that. And when you do that land planning under the comp plan, which we have been required to do for many decades, you typically say, okay, if we're going to put an industrial heavy use in, what comes along with industrial uses? Noise, trucks, these types of things. You usually put these things next to where you got the transportation infrastructure. Same with commercial, you know, you don't, you typically don't put a grocery store in the middle of a 500-unit housing development. You, you put it where there's mass amount of transportation opportunity, you know, on a highway or a main line or a main road or something. And now they're, they're reversing themselves. And, you know, I was joking with Mr. Reynolds one day about it, we should have brought some darts because we could put a, a city map up there, we could all take our little darts and just throw them at the board and wherever they stick is where this is going to be. And then we could take another color and just throw them at the board and say that's where commercial is going to be and not really care about how they work together. But that's kind of where we're at. So I kind of wanted to go around the room and just hear your thoughts about not only the affordability of new houses, but existing households. Because as Mr. Reynolds pointed out, a lot of these things would actually cost the existing households, taxpayers, and our businesses a lot more money and make them unaffordable. So I'm not a fan of making this house affordable at the expense of all the mother houses. So, you know, and then I think, okay, so what is the future of these trailer parks? I think about Bonavista because I think that's probably the first one, maybe Mobile Manor, that'll come into Shakopee through annexation. Is this, do we have a zoning for that, to allow that to continue? What would it look like to allow these people to pull an old 65 trailer out, put a new trailer in, and keep this cycle affordable housing going? How, how could maybe that kind of a zoning classification transfer over to something like we did in '03 with Dean Lake? Were you here for '03, Jay?
No.
The Dean Lake project where they had the smaller lot entry level, what did they call them?
They're like detached townhomes.
Carriage, no, they had carriage or villa or something. Yeah, they had like this smaller lot entry level home and then they had sprinkled in these next size up home, a little bit bigger yard. They also had the, were the eightplexes out there?
Let's, let's talk about mobile homes because that's on the top of my list.
Yeah.
Because over the years, you know, we've talked about affordability. We've had, was it Beacon or somebody come in and talk of, actually want to build the affordable housing, which would cost per unit more than actually building affordable housing or regular units. So in my mind, and I'm a product of a mobile home park at one point in my life, I think that's an easy way to start someone on the road to being able to get their foot in the door of homeownership by actually buying, purchasing that home and having some value. There's a lot rents and things involved in that too. Now to, you brought up some good points of some of our future spaces, possibly zoning some spaces around the existing mobile home parks, adding that value. I don't know if that would fall under R4.
Well, this is not really, we're not here to make concrete action steps. We're here to just throw out ideas.
No, but in my mind.
And get people's minds just to stir in.
Right, that would be an easy one. It would be a mobile home park, low hanging fruit, small lots, things like that. But would that, would that fall into that zoning or would that qualify for a different zoning?
We were looking, when the county did a feasibility study to expand that park, we were looking at creating a PUD.
Okay, so that's what it would be, okay.
Part of that is because they're kind of private streets and if you're to start to put in public streets, you're really opening up some extra land and setbacks coming into place with the PUD and giving some more facilities.
Well, and it would.
Any thoughts on the mobile home stuff though?
It would require the property owner to be involved in the process.
Sure, sure.
If somebody wanted to put a, I guess, mobile home area in Shakopee, how would they go about doing that? Is that, do you literally buy the land and the normal development process or?
I would assume so, but you know, then there's also the Met Council cost. There's that, just plugging into a sewer, even at a mobile home level, there's a good cost to that.
Right. I want to piggyback off of the mobile home discussion. So another thing we're thinking about is, so as these mobile homes are aging out, you know, at the different parks, what about, and then we're annexing them into the city eventually? What happens if we zone to allow permanent, so right now, these are not permanent structures. What happens if we allow for permanent, like tiny home structures or something that, you know, yeah, pre, you know, something like that where we just, we allow flexibility in that, in that zone to create flexibility for people's budgets? You know, if they want to, they want to move in a new mobile home, they can. If they want to build a structure, you know, they can. It's, I think we have, the big thing is we've got to allow people to have choices and what works best for them. We, I don't think it's for any of us or the state or anyone that tells people, this is what's going to be best for you. No one knows your own budget than yourself. So if we give them flexibility in that aspect of it, I think it would help provide greater idea. I mean, there could be things that we're not even thinking about that people are like, well, can I do this? And, you know, if it makes sense.
Well, I think the trailer park issue, you know, I, I don't know that I was looking to expand it. I was trying to take the concept and do something with it somewhere else and try to keep what we have going and make it better. That's just my thought, but.
Lot size lot?
Well, I, I think they're a current non-conforming but allowed use. I could be wrong on that. So any kind of changes that you want to make to an existing trailer park to make them not movable, I think would be a challenge because you've got the property owner who's renting out the lots and they're not going to let you put something permanent on their lot.
Sure, sure.
Right? Unless they were part of the conversation and they sold off lots within it or something like that, I don't know. But I was going back to the '03 award-winning, by the way, Dean Lake development, where they had that entry level home, the next level up, and I can't remember if they were villa and carriage homes or something. But we could do what you're saying with the trailer park model, but now they're more of a permanent structure, right? On a smaller lot, kind of, kind of taking the mobile home concept and making it into a zoning issue in Shakopee. And you know, this is just brainstorming, we're not directing or anything. It'd take a whole lot of staff expertise to figure out how to do some of these things. But it's good, good things to think about.
So you're, what I'm hearing you say is lot sizes and setbacks.
Yeah, can I, let me.
Certain cases maybe?
And let me, I'm going to, I'm going to throw some more things out there for that. So one thing, you know, right now, we're noticing these home builders come in and I know it's profitable for them and that's why they're doing it, but not everybody can come in and afford the 3,000 square foot, three-car garage with the hardy board and the, and the, you know, the big yards and all that. I think that if there's some way we could incentivize a builder to come in where we are reducing lot sizes, setbacks, parking minimums, and please, like, please come in and build these more modest homes, three bedrooms, two bathrooms, unfinished basement, two-car garage, you know, something like that a family can afford to get into outside of these homes that are starting in the five, I think one development's starting in the 500s, you know? And that's.
We did that. Yeah, we don't want to lose sight of, of a couple of things here. One is the developer builders are going to build what the market wants.
Right.
Okay? And if there's not a desire of the market for what you're explaining, they're not going to build it hoping that the market is there. So, and that's a, that's a good discussion to have with some builders, right? We probably should have them discussions at some point. Um, we probably should have them discussions at some point.
That's where Valley Crest is, I mean, they, you all saw it.
I'm just gonna look at Michael.
Valley Crest is that home, so those are forty-foot wide lots, no basement, three bedrooms, two baths.
So, how much are they?
Are you talking about the ones off of Canterbury?
Yep.
How much are they?
How much were they, four hundred?
Yeah, they were four hundred.
Yeah, see-
Thirty-foot, thirty-foot wide homes on forty-foot lots.
Five-foot-
And they, and they've been selling out, though, right?
Completely sold out.
Four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So, that's not affordability?
I mean, that's, yeah.
And, and that's just it. I mean, it doesn't matter what ultimately the house costs. The market is going to determine what a builder or, or a homeowner is gonna get out of it.
About five years ago, those were three hundred thousand.
Right.
As the mayor said, the cost of inflation, labor, and everything else put into the houses, there are four hundred thousand. Those are what I would consider kind of our base entry level home now. And they're mostly going to first-time homeowners.
How do we keep that cost down as a city? Could we offer a TIF to offset some of those costs uh, for housing?
I don't think in Minnesota, TIF for housing is allowed.
Plus, it's affordable housing like we did at the All Saints, I think.
Yes, it is for affordable, has to meet a certain level.
Yeah.
So, if-
That probably would not, I mean, it's no different than the um, CDA's land trust. So, they're underwriting and writing down those costs of those homes to keep them affordable for the next thirty or forty years.
True, that kinda same process, TIF kind of thing.
Go ahead.
One thing worth noting, talking about tiny houses, we talk to people frequently about that. And the entire time that I've been at the city coming up on twenty years, our minimum dwelling unit size is four hundred square feet. And it's been that way for a long time, which is twenty by twenty.
Well, what zoning classification?
R one B, R one C, lots similar, that's very small. People haven't taken us up on that, but that's something that would be allowed. You could have a very small lot that was maybe from the, in the whole downtown area, that was thirty feet by ninety feet. You could build a house on that and twenty by twenty and just add, and that's something that would be allowed. People haven't taken us up on it, but it's been allowed for very little time.
Yeah, some lots down in the lower part are subdivided into, you know?
And there you're back to what is it the market wants? Because, you know, you're, you're seeing a lot of these new home buyers that they want the sun, moon, and sky. And, you know, they want the granite tops, the stainless everything, and they want three-car garage. They, they want everything, um, and, you know, teach their own, but you know, it's what, what does the market want? So, like I said, we're not here to try to fix this. We're trying to just have an open discussion about it, let things think in, sink in for a while, um, you know?
Done with your thoughts on that, Jesse?
Go ahead.
Any mobile home thoughts and small thoughts, small home thoughts?
Any more of that?
Yeah, did you have some other thoughts on that?
No, um, that was pretty much it for that aspect of it. Um, how much money are we getting from the state? How much was that?
Uh, three hundred fifty thousand? Yeah, something-
Seventy-four, three, okay.
And that's the ti- the one you're talking about, going to the CDA?
That went to the CDA, yeah.
No.
No?
Oh, we have, we have not-
Voted on that.
We have not uh, brought that forward yet, um-
That was the proposal.
That was a proposal, and um, you know, I haven't brought it forward because I'm not sure that we have support for it, so. Ultimately-
Go ahead.
So, I'm gonna transition into my, an idea that I've been brainstorming about, um, that I'm, so first, I'm just gonna throw it out there. I am not a fan of um, that whole, when the county came and said, hey, we want to take Prior Lake's money, your money, Savage's money, we wanna pool that into a trust and we wanna help manage that for you. The minute I heard that, I did not think of anything good happening from that. I um, thought of everything that could go bad with it. Um, and so I'm like, well, what, what, what's an alternative? Because, you know, if you don't like something, well, if you don't present an alternative, you are just, you're not solving the problem. So, I did come up with an alternative for your viewing pleasure. It is called the Home Safe Renewal Initiative. Empowering citizens and strengthening communities. This is going off of the Home Rehab and Preservation Program. Um, I do have an extra if the planning, other planners wanna review it, pass it on.
The how is exactly what the county trust, trust is doing.
What's that?
The how is exactly what the county's proposing in their trust.
Sure, oh, so let me go through it real quick, and then I do have questions and it's all that at the end. So, I just wanna throw this out there and then we'll discuss. So, Shakopee's Home Safe Renewal Initiative possibility is for Shakopee citizens primarily focusing on homeowners sixty-five and older.
What page are you on?
First, first page. And, no, this is just an idea, there's nothing set in stone. This is just an idea that I formed in my head. This is something flexible and um, all that. Um, so primarily focusing on homeowner, homeowners, so I wanna stress that, sixty-five and older, possibly. The program initiative would provide Shakopee homeowners the funds necessary to make necessary repairs and/or updates to their primary residence, allowing them to remain safely in their own home. Update examples would include new roof, siding, windows, exterior doors, landscaping, possibly, uh, HVAC, failing driveways, steps, concrete on private property. The how. Funds are provided to the homeowner at no interest. The, a lien is then placed on the property for the project amount. The funds are then recouped at the time that the estate sells. So, my idea of this is, I didn't wanna just give a homeowner a, a loan to say, here's money to do your roof, and then we never see that money ever again. The idea is that we would be able to, they would be able to get that project done, and then we, uh, we're, we're not in it to make, and make any money. There's not gonna be any interest gathered from it. There wouldn't be any, um, anything that we're gonna ask from the homeowner to repay us. We just want, when the home sells, so whether there's a death or they move or whatever, we would recoup that, let's say fifteen thousand dollars, and then that would be essentially perpetual into a next, uh, another project we could do later on.
Are, are you familiar with the tax deferral program for sixty-five and over?
No.
Okay, there's a, there's currently a program al- already available to homeowners in their house at age sixty-five where they can defer their property taxes until, at a time when this house would sell. And, and they typically do that and use that savings into uh, hiring private sector to make repairs that they need.
Sure.
So, so that exists.
We used to do two, uh, that was actually initiated, we had Carver County run it so that it wasn't looking shady that we're giving our buddies, you know, the money. But we, I, I know my neighbor got a new roof through that program. But it was kinda the same deal, it was a-
That was a nonprofit that was doing that, because I-
I'm not talking about the Christmas and May tech stuff. It's, it was something else that was through-
Mark Greenfield program, you know, worked with Carver County.
Yeah, what was the name of that program?
Um, boy.
Yeah, or I don't, I didn't wanna cut you off, but we had a program like that.
We worked well, a lot of people are in the same thing.
So, that-
And their houses got fixed up.
Okay. Where would this money be coming from?
Sure, okay, wow, hold on. So, the initiative balance would live perpetually even if and when state funds end. So, let's say we get three fifty, three fifty, it ends three years from now. We would have those funds essentially within the city um, to be using through projects because we're gonna be recouping those funds when estates sell. Should the initiative balance reach a certain amount based on council wishes, new funds could be used for other initiatives. So, let's say we're like, hey, it reached X amount of dollars. We wanna allocate funds to fund X, Y, Z project or whatever else for other housing issues, okay? Who, the Home Safe Renewal Initiative is a program that can be run in-house, meaning within the city. No need to participate in that county trust. Um, an idea would be that our grants and special projects coordinator would oversee the program. Finance would manage the funds and report to council on status. Once the initiative parameters are established and approved by council, there would be no need to run every project for council approval. So, meaning, um, once we set parameters for the program and it's all agreed on, as long as someone comes and applies, they ought, we don't need to, they don't need to come to us and say, yeah, we say yea or nay, it's gonna be an approved project. Benefits to the initiative would be increasing their home value, increasing curb appeal. It would increase overall neighborhood value. And this is, I'm primarily, my idea of this was thinking about Tenth Street North. Or is it Ten, is it Ten Avenue, Tenth Avenue or North?
C.
Yep. So, that's my idea to help um, fix up that, those houses um, that are a little bit older. It makes the home closer to turnkey for any future owner. The home is safer for the aging resident. And to protect the vulnerable homeowner in this um, city's interest, we would, we could potentially prioritize local contractors. This initiative would pay, provide jobs and support for local businesses. And we could potentially do possible, um, they could bid and apply to be a contractor in this program, which is an idea to help um, spur um, jobs. Um, next steps potentially could be city staff would set parameters of the initiative for us to review and approve. Um, an idea would be that there is an application window that we would open up, maybe at the beginning of the year. Um, you know, the application would, process would be that uh, the homeowner would get two to three estimates for whatever their pro- whatever project they wanna do. Um, eligible and non-eligible product, projects would be eliminated. Um, you know, and then another idea is, do we require a certain length of owning the home? So, um, if you've been in your home for twenty-plus years, you're eligible. Ten-plus years eligible. And then making sure that you're current on property taxes and stuff like that, so. Those are a lot. Um, questions, comments? Again, this is an idea to-
So, would there be an, an income eligibility cap?
That's up to us, that, if we wanna do that, yeah.
You certainly don't wanna be given free stuff to millionaires, right?
No. And, so, yeah, so, you know, do we put a cap on income? Um, my idea is to asen- incentivize homeowners. I don't wanna enrich landlords, I don't wanna enrich developers.
So, how is this fit under a, a home affordability? I mean, this is property owners keeping their tax, keeping their wealth, rather than we're, we're giving money to help people stay in their homes, which I agree with. I'm not saying anything bad about this, this idea, cause we've done this program, it works great. But I think we're talking about home affordability and getting people to be able to afford houses and what we can do. And this is more of, to me, keeping people in their homes and uh, keeping our taxes, uh, the tax value of my neighbor's property up, so my tax value stays up.
Well, and not only that, but when you take, when you take the naturally occurring affordable housing, fix it up and increase its valuation, yeah, they've got net equity. But you, you, in, in effect, you've turned around and raised their property taxes and made them pay out more um, based on that valuation.
Yep.
And, and you make their budget tighter because of the program.
Um, but, I mean-
And if you're gonna go by income eligibility, that's a whole nother layer of need that Shakopee would need, have to have in the staffing to be able to, to go through that.
It would be a cost.
Where the county already has that in place.
Yeah, and I wanna go back to that, too, because the county trust program, I have full faith in that program. They know how to run these programs, they run these programs all the time. That investment of putting our money into the, the, the county uh, uh, CDA, I think is of great value and uh, would be a good program, and I have no problem uh, investing in that.
Okay. I disagree. I think it will be a total mess, and I will vote no on it when it comes forward, cause I just-
Let's remember that we're not here to decide any policy. It's nice that you brought this with, so we can-
Yeah, it's just an idea, so just wanna throw it out there.
It's something that we can all go through in our heads for the next couple of months or whatever. So, that's great, but we're not here to discuss who's where on what, what, you know, what-
I just wanted to make sure that county knows.
You know, when we look at the, the housing that the county has already done in the trust out on uh, sixteen and eighteen, um-
It's a lot of work.
It, it is a lot of work, and, and I understand what they're trying to accomplish on one side where they have, the dollars came in from the state or federal or wherever, and they wanted to be able to shelter, if you will, in a trust, um, and, and have an asset, give somebody a step in, uh, after so many years, they get a percentage of that equity back, uh, they can now move up, right?
Is that kinda like the voucher program that was in your, your notes, uh, Mr. Reynolds? The CDA program, is that like a voucher?
Uh, it's similar, um, you know, I think that with vouchers themselves, they're essentially um, i- i- it's, it's like money that then gives the person the individual choice to make. It's just that somebody else is footing the bill.
Where here in the trust, the county's got this property that has value. Um, they assume it's gonna keep its value or increase in value. Uh, that assumption is based on probably some of your concerns, um, that, you know, somebody comes in, trashes a place, they have to put a whole bunch of money into it to bring it back to the value that it was when it began, right? Um, certainly a legitimate concern. Um, my, my bigger concern with it was they were building half a million dollar houses, and it really wasn't an entry-level house.
Oh, half a million dollar houses now.
Right now. But I, I also have to add, Mayor, the CDA is doing a lot of work beforehand with these people who are going in.
Right.
There's not just a random, they're giving them classes, or, you know, they're asking them to do this. I don't think I would spend all this effort and work to try to, you know, get this house and then, you know, go in and trash it later. I mean, it's, it's your home, it's your first time home, it's the dream, the American dream.
And I haven't accused anybody of that, I think, I think that, that's just a, a legitimate concern when you take tax money and you do this, and it's an investment, right? You wanna protect that investment. Um, but it really doesn't go back to Council or Whiting's position, this is affordability, right?
Right.
So, you know, we may, at the end of the day, decide that there's not a whole lot we can do about affordability. And, and, I mean, in, in my mind, if, if we really looked at the things that we could do for affordability, um, we're, we're pretty limited, um, short of putting it on somebody else's expense a- and making them unaffordable. So, it's just a shift is what it is.
That seems to be what's happened in most attempts to make housing more affordable.
Right, right, I mean, I mean-
And even transit, putting in transit.
Issue is, right now, the biggest issue that nobody wants to confront, and, and it's unfortunate because if the state would admit, the biggest problem with housing affordability right now is inflation and interest.
Wages.
Yeah, labor.
Well, and your wages are decreased by inflation. When anything that you purchase costs more, um-
To get it to you.
You know? City could, you know, fees that we charge, okay? But then who's gonna subsidize? I mean, them, them fees are supposed to pay for the actual staff time going into it, so, you know, we've had that discussion at council, we've got these fees and where are we using them? Um, but you're cer- you certainly don't wanna pass that cost on to, lower the fees down, pass the cost on to your existing households, making them more unaffordable, right? Um, land, we can't, we can't control land costs. So, what really can we control? We, we could do regulation, absolutely. Regulation is probably the only thing this, one of the things the city can do. Uh, taxes, we raise taxes, households get more unaffordable. Our tax is pretty low compared to all, everybody around us.
So, let's, let's talk about what we can do. And I had, we talked about a couple of things already, like the mobile homes and, and lot sizes and setbacks. Um, I still think that a percentage uh, in apartments, like we did at the All Saints, a twenty percent affordability could get a TIF to help them develop a new apartment building if they're gonna, would be willing to add that twenty percent. Now, let me, let me just go through a few of them. Uh, the accessory dwelling units, maybe we promote them. We've tried it evidently in zoning and uh, didn't work, but if we can continue that, uh, whatever, maybe uh, maybe, people don't know about it. I still like, I do like the elderly fixed income type stuff, uh, upgrading the homes for that kinda thing, cause I do like, think that keeping elderly in their homes is a component of affordable housing, even though, not sure we can fix it all. And then R four, uh, which you hate, I know, but increasing density in apartments is naturally gonna, in my mind-
We already did.
Create affordability. And then uh, here's the other thought I had, uh, redevelop unused retail and commercial space into uh, some sort of residential housing.
Well, and that's part of the state initiative is to allow-
That mall.
Apartments and residential up to a hundred and fifty feet, which is, I mean-
So, I'd like to hear some of your other thoughts, that I didn't hear.
Well, I, when we're talking about accessory dwelling, wow. Are you talking about like putting like a mother-in-law suite like behind a house?
Right.
Isn't that what we're trying to, isn't that what that state legislation's trying to allow to happen, or would this?
Yeah, the, the-
Yes.
There, there are portions of, of the state legislation, frankly, that I think cities can live with. Um, but there's a lot of other problems with the legislation as a whole.
And the problem with the granny house is, is it really gonna be affordable after you try to get that sewer running around the house?
Well, so affordability, and then like parking, like where would, like, would we require um, a spot for parking? Would it be off-street, on-street, behind the alley? Um, cause once, you know, you, once you're add, you're adding to that area of, that's already small. I'm just curious, like, how that would work?
Well, and that's a problem-
I have an apartment on my house and it's on-street parking.
And, and that's a problem with the state issue, state legis- proposal, because they want to limit parking one per, uh, dwelling. And if you add that dwelling and you already have a spot for the existing dwelling, I mean, you're gonna find yourself with a lot of cars on the streets during a snow-
During snowbirds.
During a snow event, and you're gonna have more cars driving around waiting for the plow to go to buy to park on the, a side of the street, so.
Other thoughts?
Yeah, you mentioned something about exterior material adjustments, what, what does that cover exactly, what is?
That bothers me, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we've, we've attempted that in the past and had some problems with it in the, uh, off Tenth Avenue, over by the high school, uh, those homes in that particular area, um-
Sage Lane, or, uh, no?
We allow vinyl siding, which is the absolute cheapest.
Yeah, but we had, we had a lot of problem with the vinyl siding that was being used in that area.
Developers pocket then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Super material.
They're still selling whatever the market rate.
Yeah.
They're saving their money there, you know, on their own.
So we can't control the cost of the land, we can't control the cost to put in, oh, sewer, water, electricity, these types of things, roads. Um, well, you could go to smaller roads, you can do some smaller roads, I suppose. We always went back and forth on the private roads, because the minute the, they start wearing out, they expect the taxpayers to pay for it.
We don't want to go down that road.
Right? So, I mean, we already offer smaller sized dwellings. Nobody wants them, apparently, or they don't know about it, right? So, Mr. Delaney, go ahead.
No, I'm just gonna, you mentioned, well, actually, thank you. You actually mentioned, um, commercial prop, commercial property, I mean, I guess-
Redeveloped.
Yeah, well, he says about the mall over there that seems to be somewhat empty periodically. I mean, with something like that, it would-
I mean, a big parking lot that's not being used, you know, that land that's just sitting there.
Yeah. And that's the first thought that I came to mind, I think it's actually pretty, it's getting pretty full, the old mall is, is used up now, but we've had those thoughts and conversations. What's that?
That's actually called for the compliance, that in the future, with, as parking, you know, back in the day, a target had a huge parking lot, but as those lots get smaller and smaller, demand, you could redevelop a parking lot.
We added, also, we added some, uh, ability to add more, uh, retail, so they could take away some of that parking and put in a coffee shop or McDonald's in the parking lot.
And you could always do, uh, I mean, you, you see it, Dan, like in, in Minneapolis and as you get closer to the ci- city center, you know, you have shopping, you have retail on the bottom level, and then you have housing on top of it. I mean, there's still, you're still being able to use retail and, you know, use housing.
That doesn't always work either.
We're gonna find ourselves going in this vicious cycle, and, and that's good, because that's a good thing that we should learn out of this. Because, uh, this vicious cycle that we keep finding ourselves in, when you have a nonprofit working with the state that's building an affordable apartment complex at four hundred thousand dollars a unit, okay? So are, are we really achieving the goal by having that vision? No, they're not, and, and they're supposed to be the experts at it in a nonprofit with taxpayer money. So how do, how is it that we somehow come back around the circle and say, gee, we could put apartments over here, they're gonna be affordable? When they can't do it. Do you call four hundred thousand dollars for a studio apartment affordable?
But I think California's got their private developers, instead of giving the bonding money to nonprofits, is giving it to private developers. Because the mayor mentioned interest rates are a big issue now. They're actually issuing bonds to for-profit developers to get a-
No, I think that'd be a good use for a bond.
Are they checking to see what their, what their cost to build it and what they're selling it for?
They, uh, they're not selling it, they, they're in the long-term ownership position.
Trusted.
I see.
For profit. And their delivery units have, or, or almost about half or a third of the cost of the nonprofit.
Which now takes us to the next hurdle. So we build wall-to-wall apartments, society is no longer generating wealth. What happens down the road for all of this generation that has built no wealth in ownership of property? You know, you go back two generations ago, everybody owned a house. And, you know, some had the small house and no kids, some had the big house with five kids, whatever. And over the course of time, they, they built up equity and, oh, they got older, they had, uh, they sold their house on the free market, they took the money and it was a s- part of their retirement plan. And, and, I mean, if we're not gonna have that, not look forward on these issues, we already know social security and, and Medicare is probably not as solvent as we'd all like it to be. What's gonna happen to that generation when they retire and don't have anything?
Because you're talking about they're always gonna be renting?
Well, if you have half of your society renting, they're, they're gaining no, no equity, right? So, you know, like I said, you, we may go around and around in circles and accomplish very little, and that's okay. That's certainly absolutely okay, we owe it, since this is a, an important issue that the state has brought forward and, and society in general. But I've gotta tell you, if I had energy prices down, inflation down, and interest rates down-
Wages up.
Wages would go up if inflation was down.
I, you know, I think that's part of it, I think we gotta also remember, so we're, I don't think we should be subsidizing with TIF or abatement, anything that doesn't have the wages like we have in our new plan, which we've talked about. And, uh, um, really look at that if, if we are gonna offer incentives.
And we adj- and we did adjust those just this year to raise it, to-
The bigger question is, is inflation gonna come back down? And the Fed said they were gonna lower in interest rates three basis points, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Does the price of those houses then drop?
This year, no, but it makes your mortgage a hell of a lot, heck of a lot cheaper, right?
To afford your mortgage, sure.
Um, so it would be great if we knew what the long-term outlook really was, inflation-wise. Cause if, three, three years from now, inflation might be down, interest rates would come back down, half of the problem is solved. There will need to take action. Everybody, I, the, the thing I'm trying to point out here is, there's a lot of entities taking a lot of knee-jerk reactions. State, feds, even the federal government is talking about a executive order on housing. But none of them are actually willing to, to say, here is the first and largest cause of this. The state's not saying inflation is a problem, high interest rates on a mortgage have doubled the house payments, they're not, nobody's talking about it. They, they want to say, we're gonna do all of this and pass it down to the cities, and it's their problem now.
That's why that land trust idea is, to me, makes sense, because the value of the land historically has, has not gone down. I mean, you, there's value there into that property, and even though you put the house on it, now, even if it does get beat up, smashed, it's still gonna hold the value, in more value than it did five years ago. Unless there's a crash of some sort, so I, I see that as, as a good, good tool.
One, uh, ah, dang, one citizen got ahold of me and, uh, I don't know if they knew this meeting was happening, but they were talking about housing affordability and they've got this grand mind, uh, plan in their mind that, you know, if society would utilize the, the trades, the people that are going to VOTEC or in the high school, taking, uh, carpentry and electricians and plumbers and all these types of things, and get them the hands-on training with the professional groups. You, you get that labor, they get the experience, it's good for the trades, it's good for the people in the trades, it's good for the, bringing the cost down on the actual construction side. And they've got the mentorship of the professionals and the inspectors that are coming through afterward and making sure everything's up to snuff. You know, and my thought, kind of a nice idea, but you would need such a quantity to make that work. That I don't know that that quantity is there, but that doesn't mean, shock me, couldn't do it in our own community. And, which is kind of falls into the innovation hub.
Right, I was just gonna say that.
Timing, I've learned over twenty-some years in government, it's always timing, and governments always get the worst possible timing. Not by choice, it's just the way it happens.
I think the innovation hub is, is on a good timing, uh-
Well, if it was already in place-
But I think it's still-
We would be able to do some of these things with the trades and some other things.
Gets poised.
But then again, you're, you're at the mercy of, do the builders actually want to provide a for, more affordable housing? And they're-
There's just no free labor, you can't just have some kids say, we're gonna train you, now pay them, they don't, there's, there's none of that anymore.
They would be in, they would be in school for this.
There's no internships that don't get paid, though.
Well, they'd still get paid, but you're not paying the same wage as you are for the people you're working with, okay? If you have a crew of twenty framing out a house and you get four students to help you out, you now reduce to sixteen the, the professional labor, right? By four bodies, uh, so it does actually reduce that cost, and it gives these four kids real-life experience.
Apprenticeship.
Helps their education for sure, to be in the real world, I mean, we do it with our CAPS program, right? Same model, just, uh, in real world in different areas in the trades. Same with plumbing, electricity, you'd have to have professional people.
One other thought that just came to mind, is you go back in history, and I'm, I'm thinking of Chaska, and those old brick row houses. So I think it was the sugar factory put in their own workforce housing, track housing, uh, and they used to do that a lot more. And, uh, I don't know if there's any way to incentivize, uh, developers and builders, they're gonna come in to build their own darn apartments.
Thank you for bringing that up, because that's actually been a discussion that, uh, Tim Zunker at the Chamber kind of has been playing around with, um, about workforce housing. And when companies come in to, I don't know all the logistics, the logistics of it, he was explaining it to me, but I don't know enough to reiterate it back. But you're right, like, come, back in the day, people, companies would build housing for their employees.
Valley Fair.
Hershey.
Hershey, yeah, and you, they would, you know, live there and, um, that you could, I don't think they would rent it, but you could, you know, own it. And, um, there's like, uh, you, you work for the company for so long and certain things are forgiven, or, you know, like, they give them a down payment. Like, hey, you worked for us for five years, we're gonna give you a down payment for your home, you stay here with us, we're gonna forgive it, you know, kind of things like that, um-
Valley Fair has that today.
Do they? Not, not just the dorms?
Yeah, them dorms are for their employees.
Not, not like the company.
But not to keep, yeah, seasonal.
And what surprises me is that's empty all winter long. It's like, why would they not capitalize on that and, and rent them out, you know?
Homeless.
What's that?
Homeless in the winter.
Develop the or, uh, the, uh, the, uh, training facility, RTF.
Where's the, uh, the buildings you're talking about in Chaska?
Uh, they are, uh, right down there by the city square.
I remember the sugar plant along the railroad tracks. It was to the west or to the east of town where the sugar plant was.
Yeah, but it's right off of city square, uh, where these are, anyway. Kind of, uh, there was a movie theater down that road there, and it was, uh, our fire, uh, fireman's pastor's church.
I remember a movie theater over there.
The military does it, Bill, right? You know, you have these bases and then they would have homes, and they're literally like cook, like identical rows and rows and rows. We had them back in where, where I grew up in Wilmer, like, you go in the certain neighborhood and you knew that those were the mil- old military houses, because they looked identical, like row and row and row.
Capitalism.
Behind the Dairy Queen up here.
Is that what that is too?
If I was still in my drinking days and lived there, I would walk into the raw wine. They're all exactly the same, it's one long building, there's no color breakup. The only thing that tells you the difference is the number.
Your number.
So how does that get incentivized into a new development coming into town to add, uh-
Housing.
Workforce housing. And we're using that workforce housing term a little loose, because there is kind of a classification there.
And I think the Chambers idea is, instead of all the programs we're getting pushed right now, with, we have a workforce issue, we have a housing issue. So, instead of trying to come up with subsidies, have the corporations do a forgivable program, then we get a tax credit for that fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. The employee would have to work for them for five years, they have to pay that. So they would be attracted to draw more employees, and it would keep your employees who wouldn't have cost return.
They have to do their five years.
Leave for fifty seconds.
Right, right. Good idea.
I, I think we're less likely to see homeownership, uh, deteriorate as much as potentially apartments. And it, the good thing about residential is somehow it manages to keep its value or grow. Even in Old Shakopee, you know, you buy a house, I think my mother paid, uh, fifteen thousand dollars back in whenever, right? Even though they're getting older, the, the values just seem to be there, and people get equity. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't want to see half of our society in apartments unless it's by choice. I have nothing against somebody that wants to be in an apartment, um, but we're making a bigger problem down the road.
You, you brought up a good point, and I think the Fourth Avenue apartments be, uh, they're subsidized, they're, uh-
On, uh, down here?
We just, we just rebond, they let them have a bond for this.
Marshall Road at Fort.
They could redo the apartments, uh, gut the kitchens, new kitchens, and whatever they had to do to. See, their senior apartments, they're probably subsidized in many cases. But that got a bond so that it could fix itself up, because the value was still there, and the value of that being renovated would pay for that bond.
Yep, it's serving that elderly population, uh, block three and four has that fifty-five above of above. And like I said at the beginning, Shakopee has done a great job way before my time, and all the councils up to and staff people of being so diversified. I mean, if you really think about it, we do have a lot of senior housing. We have, uh, the memory care, the, all these different things. And we shouldn't be punished because of it, um-
I, I think that, that's an excellent point, Mayor, you know, Shakopee has, for decades, been very good at life cycle housing. Uh, across the board, and, you know, that, and, and we pointed that out in our letter. Uh, and I think it's, we got the details in the resolution that you passed as well, that, that outlined specifically the facts, what we have done. Uh, and in, not just in, um, what has been built here, uh, but also the programs that we have in place. And, and, uh, also to make sure that those particular facilities are livable. Uh, we have our rental inspection program now. And, uh, I'll never forget, uh, I'd been here a couple of years, and a, a lady called me that the stove in her apartment did not work. She didn't want to confront the landlord, because she was afraid of getting kicked out. And there was nothing the city could do at that point about it, so I got ahold of a, a local attorney and kind of cajoled them into giving some free representation. But literally, I mean, there was nothing that we had at that point that we could do in those particular situations. We didn't have the ability to say that, you know, there has to be a certain degree of habit, had of habitability in a residence. Um, and now we do. One of the interesting things, unfortunately, for part of this legislation, is, is that important thing that we have would be gutted under the part of what the state is looking to do right now, so. But we have been very good at this and have been doing things for decades, uh, in this particular area, and we shouldn't be punished for it. You know, there are other, there are other cities that look at things differently. I'm not gonna judge them, but, you know, they, they look and make determinations best on what they believe is good for their city. That's their elected representatives making that decision. But, uh, you know, when it comes to affordability itself, you know, the market's gonna drive that.
And I'll, I'll use Detroit as a good example of that, Mr. Reynolds, because here, if you go back into the fifty, sixties, you had the big three automakers in Detroit, right? Screaming, screaming, um, excellent workforce, excellent wages, union jobs. And, uh, you know, everything was peachy keen, they had the, the housing stock, but their real big thing was the industrial. They decided they were gonna put all their chips in on industrial. And when something changed, look what it has done, right? There's, the jobs ain't there, the land is devaluing, um, it's really put them in a pickle. And some of these other communities, and I'm not picking on, you know, others, but they made decisions that maybe they don't have the diversity that we have. And, you know, we've made conscious decisions for decades to have diversity, and there's a reason for that. The rationale is, if you have commercial, industrial, and residential, that, it's kind of like a teeter totter. I hurt myself doing this, but when one goes down, the other tends to go up, and the pendulum just kind of swings around. Um, and you don't have all your eggs in one basket, so it doesn't put you in a really bad fiscal position. And, you know, the cities, communities that make them decisions for whatever reason, Michigan, um-
Prior Lake.
Prior Lake, you know, when, when that pendulum swings, they have put themselves in that position knowingly and willingly, and they're certainly empowered to do so, uh, they, they were elected by their peers to, to represent them. But on the same token, I mean, we have tried to make the diversity so that we're more resilient, I guess you would say. I, I, it bothers me that you could, you're single-family neighborhood, right? What would happen if they decided to put an apartment building a hundred and fifty feet high on each side of you?
Wouldn't it be good?
I mean, I mean, you bought there because you liked the neighborhood, right? A lot of people, when they make that investment, they're making that investment on assumptions. A lot of people, when they make that investment, they're making that investment on assumptions, okay? I bought in a single family neighborhood, close to a school. My kids were little. It's close enough to walk them up to the school and stuff and we can play at the park that's a block that way and the school's a block that way. We made these conscious decisions to make our investment in this neighborhood.
Part of our job is keeping those property values up, but we also want to keep affordability up.
Exactly.
Did you have anything Angelica that we missed?
Yeah, please. Floor's all yours for the next half hour.
We haven't heard from you.
Actually, no, and I'm the one that walked in here saying I don't have much to share because again, as city, there's variables that we can't control. And we said that from the beginning, Mr. Reynolds pointed them out. Um, and again, I feel, my personal view is that we have the county who has these great, um, programs and it's an agency that everybody knows, you know, it's, it's, I just feel that there's, we should support it more and send, you know, people to take those opportunities. They're there. Um, no need, I feel in my opinion, to reinvent the wheel. And I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out, I mean, I, I don't know what the magic, I don't have a magic wand for it to fix anything because you can't.
I'll pull up my magic wand. Everybody somehow thinks I have one, but I don't know where, where they.
Well, then fix this.
I'll have to ask past mayors where they put it.
Do you know your thoughts?
Watch this. We're gonna fix it all. We just cut inflation.
I know.
We just cut interest rates.
Raised wages.
We just got the energy costs down. We waged, increased wages. Uh, and gee, now I can actually shop around to a community that has policies in place that I like that fit what I want to spend my money on. I want that lake shore house. I don't want no heavy industrial around me. I'm going to Prior Lake. Or I want diversity so I can have a stable tax rate for fifty years going. I'm gonna go to Shakopee. Maybe I wanna be by the, all the entertainment. Oh, that would be Shakopee.
That would be Shakopee.
Maybe I want the transportation system coming through so it's easy to get anywhere. Well, that would be Shakopee. Maybe I need rail. Oh, that would be Shakopee.
Hasn't others, like, hasn't Minneapolis done different things that opened up development to ADUs and, and pretty much cleared the board for anything and, and the development really didn't happen? I mean, isn't that the case? I know they do allow, you can pull up your RV in Minneapolis if it's not on a no parking street and live there. Till the county shows up and decides whether you deserve to live there or not.
I think a very good point, Councilor Whitey, because if, whatever we ultimately do, we don't want to worsen the community for others. I mean, we want the best for everybody. We want them to be able to move up the economic, social economic ladders and stuff. But we certainly don't want to take an existing neighborhood and devalue it, right?
Even with parking in, in Minneapolis, another example, there's so many issues with plowing and parking. That it, they created another issue.
You just, you just double your rent in the winter months to get your car out of imp.
Yeah, you gotta go down to the lot to get it. Yeah, so there's, you can create more issues is what I'm trying to get at.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I just thought, you know, like I said, I wanted this to be earlier to have this discussion and know where everybody's thoughts are dealing with the state on some of these issues. Like Mr. Reynolds said, there's some stuff that it's not so bad, but, uh, there's some stuff that is, would fundamentally change Shakopee substantially. Uh, and there's so many unknowns that, uh, I don't understand how come these people don't think through these things a little further for clarity.
And not for the better.
Ouch.
It wouldn't be changed for the better.
No, absolutely not. So, um, I would be really curious to hear from a couple of builders on their thoughts on the whole topic.
They'd be all at the four point five percent to five percent, but that would be point net.
Well, you know, if this is what they do for a living, then, you know, I, if, if we offer smaller housing and nobody's taking us up on it, they don't want that apparently. I don't know the answers, you know?
The home, there's all the interest rate, but they're subsidizing it.
Yeah.
What, what was that?
The, the home.
The home, so D R Orton's selling lots of homes because they're offering a subsidized interest rate, but they're not giving you a finished basement or.
Money's not in selling the houses, it's in the financing them.
Well, why, 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 since the, since the federal government wants housing affordability and they own Freddie Mae and Fannie Mae, why would they not lower the interest rates by maybe two percentage points just on mortgages?
I don't know how the game plays.
I, I, I guess that would be a good president, or a good question for the federal government because the only drawback to that is they don't have the interest coming in to help them subsidize their, their deficits. And a lot of them deficits came from parties past, both parties, right? So it's not a partisan thing.
I think it was gifts to millionaires.
The only, the only fix to that, to, to the, to doing that would be they'd have to control their spending a little bit more and offset the two percent on the mortgage side. So if they were serious about fixing it, that's what they would do, right? If, if the state was worried about housing affordability, maybe they want to raise every single tax and create some new ones. I mean, none of us, I don't think, are against the transportation tax tweaking up an eighth of a percent because we recognize the transportation needs, right? But they keep doubling down and doubling down and these are all funds that are coming out of people's checkbooks, which makes your house less affordable. And if you were gonna buy a house or an apartment, you're, you open up your wallet and you go, you take out everything for, you know, the meal out tax or whatever, the thing you're buying at the store. Once you take all of these extra costs out of there created by government, you have a lot less to buy that apartment and now the apartment is unaffordable because the other things that you're purchasing are necessities also. So people are getting squeezed and it doesn't matter if you live in a house or apartment, everything's a lot more expensive. We're back, full circle, inflation. All right, let's break out the booze and start drinking and, uh.
I don't know if staff got much out of that, but you kind of know where we're rolling.
Well, yeah, you know, it, it is important to, as the mayor reflected, to kind of get a, a check in with you on this really important issue. Especially with what's happening with, with the state right now. Uh, I do wanna say I appreciate all of your support. Um, as we've been battling these particular issues, uh, both with the letter and, and the resolution and it is making a difference.
And I, I would caution not to take a lot out of this meeting. Take, you know, read all your stuff, throw, throw things around in your mind. The thought process could change dramatically depending on what the state or the federal government does in the next, you know, four, six months, right?
Councilor Laura, we'll definitely take a look at this and, and, um, just give a general staff breakdown for everyone again, so you guys can think about it and if it's something you'd like to pursue. You know, we do have this money coming in from the state. We've gotta do something with it. So, uh, you know, ultimately we are gonna come back and, and, and ask for what you want done with it. But, uh, you know, there, there are some limited, um, things that we can address. You know, I think that this is certainly a viable program. There are other viable programs we could put together as well. For me, the recognition is, is that this isn't really what we do as a city. We're, we're, we're not in the housing, home affordability business. And, um, I just wanna make sure that whatever we do, it's not gonna tax us to the point where then we've got to hire staff, which means we're gonna raise taxes, uh, you know.
We'll make, we don't wanna make the housing that we have more unaffordable. The goal is to be more affordable.
I appreciate you bringing that forward to Jesse, but maybe since we did have a program similar to it.
Yeah, we, we.
Remember the name. Residential rehab loan, we'll fit, bigger, better acronym this time, next time.
But we'll, we'll definitely take a dive on that and, uh, try to come up with some other ideas. But something's gotta come forward at some point because we do have this money that's coming in from the state. So this was helpful from that perspective. I mean, you know, there.
I just wanted to keep it local. I wanted to keep it in, in the city. I wanted it to benefit taxpayers of the city and not potentially lose it to another project that benefits somewhere else in the county.
I mean.
Maybe a portion of it can go to some, not all, you know.
Let me share some really frustration, okay? Deep frustration. I had it for a while now. Now it's even more. But, you know, I'm thinking about Bonavista and I don't, I'm not picking on him. I'm just using him as an example. At some point, they're gonna need cities who are extended. Very expensive. If you're gonna, if you're gonna keep that affordable housing and allow it to update itself, um, through some kind of a zoning mechanism, it's gonna need these services, right? Where is the Met Council that keeps telling us how important affordable housing is to actually help the cause?
You know, they could have a, a lift station program or something like that.
Well, I mean, they could, they could waive part of their sewer access charges. They could come forward and say, geez, you know, there's three hundred affordable houses here that we, we don't want us to go away. Maybe we could pick it, pick, pitch in something to help the infrastructure. It's not like we are gaining as a community having that infrastructure.
The county needed feasibility, yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Lift station, I think we, I remember talking to somebody about it.
They actually could have our sewer system, but talk about affordability, those lots, the new lots that we're gonna create worth a thousand dollars a month to rent, never mind the cost of the. I think if the county ran the numbers, it was over ten million dollars. They were like, that's not good enough for turnout, ten million dollars.
So if you want that affordable housing, these are issues where you need to have partners coming together that have been preaching this stuff actually step up and back up what they've been preaching, you know?
Would that be a partnership opportunity with the county in that situation?
Well, you need the Met Council and the state to, to.
That ten million did not include this after a while. That was just.
Yeah, that was.
So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's a dilemma. You're gonna lose a lot of your affordable housing options because of it. And everybody that says they want affordable housing isn't at the table to talk about keeping affordable housing.
Break the check.
So I.
And, and, and infrastructure is the most important piece of that discussion. And that's the one piece that nobody at the state level is looking at and saying, what is the impact to the infrastructure of these planned cities? Who said that this is going to be a residential, therefore it's gonna have to have this type of sewer. It's gonna have this type of, uh, water lines. You know, even now, we have to get permission from the Met Council whenever we tap into the sewer lines because, you know, everything has been planned out at a certain rate and everything else and, and if.
And that rate is not the same rate they're proposing in their legislation.
No, not at all. It, it's, it's a total.
They won't be able to process it at the Blue Lake.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, no one, no one has thought through that.
No, they really haven't.
That's the real concern because the impact on the city, you won't see it immediately, but you will see it over time because that infrastructure has got to be able to handle the loads of whatever it is you're requesting. And there's nothing worse when you flush the toilet and you want it to go that way.
It goes the other way.
It doesn't.
Just, uh, let me ask, is there any staff member that wanted to make any comment on just the overall affordability conversation? Please don't hesitate. This is just a brainstorming session.
Anything inhibiting or?
We're taking up a collection for Kyle's home affordability.
Sell his bike.
There is one thing we are talking about, accessory calling units. I remember we had one, uh, good conversation staff several years ago. And then I remember one thing, you know, the emergency service people have some concerns with that.
That's, yeah.
You pop in a unit behind the main home. They get a call for service and they're going down a road. We don't know what time, how, how do you deal with that? That was an issue that they raised that was.
Is there getting access from the alley or something?
Yeah, but if you had an alley, now you're still gonna have to do the address thing to be a half or something so that it's, it's recognized to that parcel or the original parcel. But what if they don't have an alley? The legislation is it's by right. You don't need an alley.
That's right.
You don't, you don't need an alley.
They can just go apartment one or apartment two.
You don't need an alley. You can have a landlocked parcel and by right, you'd be able to put it in even though you couldn't get access from emergency services.
Or parking, or through it.
So, yeah, they're not thinking through the whole scale, which kind of surprises me when they're the ones that created the Met Council years back for this specific purpose. Absolutely for this purpose to plan things out so that you're not impeding these things, that you're planning out your resources and your infrastructure, that you're, you're planning out your transportation, you're, you're making sure you're not putting something next to something else that's not, uh, doesn't fit.
All staff heard is they don't have to do a comp plan every ten years and they were happy.
Well, and, and that's exactly right. If this was to pass, our comp plans are meaningless.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, as the mayor said earlier, get your dart, throw the dart.
Well, you know, and I voted against the comp plan, but what I'm seeing from the state is worse. So.
No plan.
It's, it's a dartboard. And, you know, I'm, bless our hearts, I'm sure what they're trying to accomplish is noble. They believe that this somehow is gonna fix the housing affordability issue. It's not. It's just not going to because they're not working through the issues. And that the easiest fix to housing affordability is?
Inflation.
Interest rates?
Raise wages.
And wages.
They, they go hand in hand, right?
Right, right, right.
I mean, we've got consumer debt the highest on, in our country's history, credit card debt. I, we've got treasuries being sold by the federal government, again, at the highest levels in history. There's a, comes a point to where the entities have got to start thinking about reality. You're not helping people with high interest. Not blaming me, a party, it's both parties for many years. The state is not helping us with the stuff that they're proposing and taking a whole bunch of your paycheck, you know? The energy costs aren't helping households and helping businesses. When consumers don't have money to spend at businesses, businesses go out of business. I know they're evil because they pull a profit, but if they didn't have a profit, they'd be done out of business. It's just not the reality. And my worst fear is that this keeps tightening up and tightening up and tightening up on, on our existing households because we're talking about affordable housing, new houses, but nobody's talking about existing households. I represent the people that are currently here, not the people that might come here later. And I'm gonna make sure that the people that are here that we represent are represented. And that's existing households. But at the same time, how do we make it affordable for everybody?
Keeping our taxes low.
It's a good start.
Yeah, we're working.
At what cost?
Yeah, but not the total, yeah, without.
If you guys were in charge, what would you do about housing affordability?
Raise wages.
See, don't, yeah, there you go.
Jobs out there still are paying like fifteen dollars a horse.
Went up in price, right?
You afford, how can you afford, how can you afford a rent?
Raise wages means the product or service you are paying for out of your checkbook just went up in price.
Well, look at the record profits from corporations.
But that's not Main Street Shakopee.
Ask for your raises now because, uh, there's nobody gonna, there's nobody to hire.
I know, that's true.
But that's not Main Street Shakopee that's reaping all these massive profits.
No, they're struggling.
No, they are. And then, you know, they, actually, uh, we've done a lot for downtown and, uh, for, when we talk about Main Street, I'm thinking downtown, but I, I know, we're broader strokes. So we've done a lot and for our community and, uh, continuing doing those types of things is what we can do for Main Street.
Any thoughts over here?
No, it's a great, great conversation and I appreciate you sending us a package. Thank you.
Yeah, I just.
You know, again, thought provoking, um, no real rhyme or reason. It was just things I thought, okay, well, this is something, this is something and then you guys can, you know.
Hey, I got an idea. Let's make some printing presses.
Print money.
Let's just print it. The feds do it, it must be okay. You good with that? Five zero?
Xerox.
Pressman tried that trick, so.
With a five zero vote.
Now, he would, uh, vote against that one.
We may all go to jail.
We should probably get the.
We may all be in jail, but.
Probably get the finance director in on this one. Told you we'd have fun, right? All right, is there anything else?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Everyone, appreciate it.